All right, good evening. Let's call this planning board meeting to order. I'm your guest conductor for the Yale Marshall. Bill is out and Tracy is out, thank you. And so at the last meeting, we decided that I would try to organize this meeting and so off we go. And we have Alan Kimerly, we have Ann Dalton, and we have the man who is just about to become a voting member of the planning board.
May I make a motion?
Would you please?
Daniel be a voting member tonight?
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes are the next item on the agenda.
May I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
You don't have them. You don't have them, our July ninth.
Trick question.
So there's no minutes?
No minutes.
No minutes.
Strike that.
All right. So moving on to item number three, I don't think there's anybody on Zoom, so we don't need to talk about that. We are doing a workshop tonight. We have no applications to process and we are back at the subdivision ordinance amendments. After the last meeting, I had a brief conversation with Matt about about site plan reviews and the pros and cons of site plan views. And I said, well, I don't know anything about site plan reviews, but maybe it's worth spending a couple of minutes. And the other thing that Matt has prepared for us is a grid of last legislative session changes to zoning ordinances that we're going to have to deal with between now and the next time meeting. And it's just something that you go through and understand because it will impact some of the things that we're doing in subdivisions and other aspects of our work. So shall we proceed? Maybe we should do the subdivision. What would you prefer during first?
Subdivision is a good place to start.
Okay.
Need to know this advertisement.
Thank you very much. This was planning board meeting. Okay, this was in the Bangor Daily News. Planning board meeting on July 10, 2025. And despite that, apparently no one has come during the journals. But we shouldn't take that as a lack of interest. It's late July. So where we're at is some exciting stuff. 4.5, the development standards and bonuses for specialized reviews.
So I will say because of legislative session, talked about it tonight, but I had suggested certain bonuses for specific types of subdivisions that we're going to go through. That with some of the new laws, technically relating bonuses anymore.
Right, right, right.
To be allowed in certain areas. So that'll be a discussion point of this. What's in here is likely going to change a little bit more, but just getting insights from the board.
Sure.
Types of bonuses you'd like to see, that sort of thing. So, yes, starting off this cluster subdivision, I really didn't change too much on what's in the existing ordinance. I think I added a couple of clarifying requirements to how it should be structured and a little redundancy in here just because sometimes it's good. But just to make sure it's clear that like, you know, shoreline zoning still applies if you're doing a specialized subdivision. You still have to check boxes of like all the state requirements for like lot size for septic and that sort of thing. So even if you are trying to get like lower lots, smaller lots sizes because of the cluster, there's still like a threshold you have to meet if you're doing private septics on each lot. So like the bonus may not apply if you've been trying to do a cluster. Just making it more obvious in that way because, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if somebody was doing private septics and then tried to make lots smaller than what the state requires and not really noticing that they're doing that. Just thinking because it's a cluster, they can get away with. And then there's a lot of detail about how to set up common space than these types of developments. So, you know, the idea of clusters after developers given we're getting smaller lot sizes and increased density in order for a trade-off of protecting, preserving open space.
Is common area the same as open space?
Yeah. I think I probably use them. I always call it common area.
Does it make sense to first kind of bring us up to speed on what clusters are usually used for? I mean, it tends to be, the only clusters I'm aware of are very intentional communities with but that doesn't necessarily have to be.
Yeah, I mean, they can be. So like, you're right, like a lot of more like clustered subdivisions early minute, again, to it's a tool to allow greater density and impact in less space, but still allow for organized plan development. And so a lot of times they are used for things like elderly housing because it's smaller, they don't need quite as much space, they don't want to manage as much space. Smaller housing units because they don't maybe need as much room to live in either. They're looking to downsize from like a big single family home. And so that's of common use for cluster.
So would Birch, do you know would Birch Bay over in Bahar, would that be a type of cluster?
I don't know if it officially came, but yeah, I mean, I like in Ellsworth, when I was there, we did them.
Now there's a community in Belfast.
Yeah, so I guess like, so that would be one cluster type is like, sometimes people call them planned unit developments. It's like a similar concept, but that really is.
Bahar neighborhood off the Knox Road, would that, that's what I'm thinking of, but it might not.
Yeah, I'm aware that's there, but I don't know.
I can't think of the name of it, where they have, this is kind of close together and they don't even, like, you can't even drive up to all the houses because the common area is the parking.
Which is kind of like Farham's Way.
Farham's Way.
More forested.
Yeah, okay.
Could be, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to define it in my head too, cluster.
Well, the idea is really like, you'll have smaller lots, smaller dwellings usually kind of centered around like, you know, these common port areas kind of or you know, like there's going to be a shared space in between each of them and then there's a bunch of open space somewhere else on the lot that's protected. So like in Ellsworth, we did a project that really isn't specifically designed for any type of purpose in particular, but it was a cluster subdivision because like the whole back of the lot was wetlands. It's like, I mean, you can't consider that part of the land when you're doing the density bonuses and stuff, but it ensured that that was protected because all the units were allowed to be closer to the road and further away from the natural resource. And so there's multiple uses for them, but it's really just like the standard. We're going to give you a density bonus in order so that you don't take up too more space than is necessary. You can fit more units in theory. And it's similar, so if you're reviewing the cluster subdivision, it really is just like reviewing a normal subdivision project except for, you know, like there's a lot of redundancy here where you look at like soils and water supply and sewer system anyway. But you're really looking at the calculation, doing some math on minimum lot sizes and the density bonus that's incurred by doing a common area and then looking at, so making sure the common area matches the total acreage it's supposed to based on the number of how much space in total there is.
There's also homeowners association documents we need to be.
Yeah, so I didn't put that underneath here, but that could also just go
It's not in.
Subdivision. Not any, because like if you do a subdivision structure, unless it's condos, you're not going to need association, but like an apartment complex, but if you do any subdivision of land, there's likely going to be a road or so I could move that out of here. I was just thinking in terms of the common area specifically here.
But I'm not sure we're talking about the same thing. The planning board will have to pass judgment on the homeowners association documents for cluster.
Well, it's not really passing judgmental then per se, but it's looking at a draft to make sure the language about the common area is specifically in there.
Yeah, I was, I had questions. That is a question I had. My question specifically after reading that was what are the standards by which the planning board would judge association documents? Because it wasn't 100% clear to me.
So I mean, again, like the only thing you're really looking at is making sure the common area is to be used for ownership by the residents. And like in the home, that would be through the homeowners association and then there should be bylaws proposed within that document.
Okay.
You don't need to like worry really about the content of that too much. I mean, you can certainly ask that a lawyer review them and get the town's attorney to give them opinion. If you're like concerned about language in there, but you're really just looking to make sure they include the common area. That there is like instructions on how we maintain, which is really the focus of this, that there are going to be, it's going to be common area and there, you know, sometimes the common area is just like forested area and really a ton of maintenance that needs to be done. Other times it is shoreline with like a beach, there's like access to that shoreline that needs to be maintained.
You could have a situation in which people decided they were going to use some of it agriculturally together.
Don't remember. I did have language talking about uses.
And then, well, yeah, there, I did have a question about that too. 4.5.1D, common areas and facilities. And then I, my, when I think about these cluster housings, there's oftentimes a commonly held building that may have because the only one I'm familiar with is the one I've seen in Belfast. And that's, so they're fairly small houses and intentionally environmentally built. And then you have this facility that has a kitchen and that has, maybe has a little apartment for guests of residents and and a sort of a recreation space. I'm, and I want to make sure that that kind of thing is anticipated if that's the direction somebody would choose to go in. And then the other question I had was there seems to be a limit on agricultural structures, like like you can't, the only, you delineate, you can only have certain agricultural structures and you can have a shed. And so like, what is a shed was one of the questions I had and I mean, if this is a place where they keep a lot of land in common and they want to have gardens and stuff like that, I assume that would be something that we wouldn't want to discourage.
Yeah, and I wouldn't consider a garden structure.
No, but you need facilities ancillary to that and it seems like you.
What's that if the garden?
Oh, garden. Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks. No.
I know, but I just wondered why you wanted to, to sort of limit in the way that you did 4.5.1D.
To be honest, I just don't think there would be a farm like so kind of coming out of this in or in not desert. I guess there could be.
I wouldn't want to discourage it, but no, I'm not talking about a full-blown farm, but.
You can build, again, like you can build storage sheds. What kind of, do you have like a building type in particular that you're thinking of?
I don't know. I just didn't know why. I wanted to be clear what we were going to be allowing for common building, you know, commonly held and commonly used buildings. They get the commonly had land and I get that, but what else do we anticipate being willing to allow as part of a cluster?
I mean, you can, again, like you can allow any type of structure as long as it doesn't fall under one of these. So like, as long as it's not for commercial
Yep.
use. And then again, like I did limit the agricultural buildings in particular. Again, I didn't, I was more thinking that there would be a farm or anything coming out of this, which is what you might want to prevent.
I would, yeah, again, I would think like community gardens, something like that.
That's allowed, at least the way I would do it. That's allowed underneath here.
There are no residency requirements in allowing this, uh, cluster subdivision.
What if they wanted a commercial, I mean, sorry, not commercial, sorry, a garage?
Yeah, we could have a.
Like a one that's for everybody, you know, like a building separate from the house.
Oh, you mean like a communal garage or a garage for each?
No, communal garage.
Yeah, they could do that. There's nothing here that would prevent them. Again, it's also not charging people to park there.
No, I mean, you do for each.
Right.
And you just have to make sure that the percentage of land that's available undeveloped is enough.
Yeah, right. As long as the common area can support that structure, yeah.
But the rules for governing homeowners association, isn't that like covenants? Are the board now looking at developers' covenants?
Question did come last time about whether or not the board is.
Authorized, yes.
Right. So I did look into this. From what I could find, the answer I got was the board typically has no jurisdiction over covenant.
Yep.
Now, the only time that would have control over covenants is if there's a specific covenant that is requested by ordinance. So like say, or maybe not the board, but the town at all, like maybe because of the, so like there's housing programs where the town will buy land value rights from a private landowner to make sure they use their housing for year-round housing and don't turn it into a short-term rental. And so the difference in that property value between taking away like commercial use and what it is, it's just residential use. And there's a covenant on the property that it can't be used for anything but year-round housing for so long.
Does that have to be like on plan or anything that they sign?
Typically in those programs, you're not just doing subdivision, you're doing individual properties at a time. So like there isn't really a plan, but they do have a legal document that states that it's added to the deed documents. And so in that case, like the town, what has to enforce the covenant? Because now they're in a contract with the private property as an entity, whereas like under these, you may read the documents and be like, this all looks good. You know, it has the common area, which is really checking for.
Would be wise though, put it on the plan that they sign in case, you know, the subdivision plan will get, would be pulled before a deed.
So it depends. So we do, I've got an earlier portion, I did have the requirement that covenants, I don't think you would want them to put all the entire association document.
No, no, but reference it under, no.
Yeah.
And then I could, because to me, like I look at the subdivision, I can see under the notes and then I can go and look at the recorded.
Yeah. Yeah, but there's something specifically it says citations below. I mean, or set document to be on that.
Yeah, law firm signing by the board, just to manage.
So I do want to get back to talking about residency issues. I mean, you know, somebody comes to us and they want to build a cluster subdivision, but what they, and what they really want to do is build a short-term rental cluster. Is, do we have a or I wondered about glamping facilities. Are those a type of cluster short-term?
Those are commercial.
So for a glamp round, you have a campground use, so.
Those aren't allowed anywhere.
Okay.
In theory, so actually, that's the plan in Ellsworth. It was open to a way around that.
Okay.
I mean, it's not really a campground. They did the project, the residential subdivision, but I just knew the outcome would be short-term rentals, but it's a really cool project, so. And I was saying, follow the rules. I did everything the residential subdivision would have to, which was more than like a campground. But, I mean, you're wading into a different part of the conversation where these rules are going to exist. No matter, like anyway, and then you have the short-term rental conversation over here, which say, you could try and wade into it now where you only allow or make a suggestion to the town that you only allow these cluster, you know, affordable or attainable housing bonuses for year-round housing. But, yeah.
I personally would be in favor of that, but.
We don't regulate rentals.
Yeah, I don't. Well, you don't have to regulate them to just have.
No, but I'm saying.
It just can happen or not happen.
There to be a mechanism. Or you should enforce it where someone would have to know if they start renting short-term at some point. To like enforce it. The board staff would have to like be checking Airbnb and see if like a new project is like if anything's been posted recently or not, that's not supposed to be.
Well, I guess we do have to get serious about trying to prevent everything in town from turning into a short-term rental.
Sure.
And if we're going to rewrite this ordinance and this section in particular seems geared towards trying to make things as affordable as possible and presumably for residences, shouldn't we be at least proposing to our town that these are the options that we can take to see that these remain as residences?
Yeah, I think you could. I think I would keep them as two different workflows. Because like if I asked you, what are you comfortable as defining a short-term rental as now? Would seasonal, like workforce housing fall under that definition or not? Like, would, is there like a definition that the board is comfortable with for short-term rental that allows for like, say, a three-month lease as opposed to a full-year lease or something like that? For a short-term, like less than a month.
I mean, there's always a discussion about whether somebody who's, who resides in a property can steward, can vacate for the summer and rent that out to help supplement their income. That's sort of a different category traditionally than saying this apartment 12 is always going to be in the, is in the short-term rental market, period. There is no resident attached to it.
Yeah, an apartment, I don't know. Like the owner of the apartment might not be living there anyway, so like you won't really want a residency requirement for that, but right, like this requires more than like what's in here. Like you'd have to fill out a framework for 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 rental. Like, are you going to have two burdens where there's somebody who owns it who lives in town versus somebody who owns it who lives out of state?
I think these all have to be grappled with. I think we're just because, just because it's hard. I mean, I, I mean, we had the problem a year or two ago with a town meeting, but I don't think that that should be the end of the discussion. I mean, not if we, I mean, we, I'm going to come to a comprehensive plan meeting in a couple of weeks and we're going to be wringing our hands about affordability. And if we don't work through that as a community, and it's a long and difficult discussion.
I don't disagree with it. I'm just saying, I don't know right now during the subdivision discussion is the time to sort out all of that.
All right.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
But that's a way of, that also could be a way of just kicking the can down the road. I mean.
Well, I think whether you address it in this section of this ordinance, you still have a lot of work to do around it. That's going to happen
Mm-hmm.
elsewhere, at a different time, further down the road anyway. So, I mean, I don't think you have the framework or the foundation to address it in this ordinance without just the larger act.
With, with the state laws, with the density changes, there's nothing, I don't think they require you. If I was to understand, they don't require, they don't, they're silent, but it doesn't mean they prevent communities from requiring residents.
They actually explicitly don't allow you to have a residency requirement for ADUs anymore. So if someone builds an accessory dwelling unit, you cannot require that.
Right, but, but workforce or?
Well, they don't touch on workforce or cluster or anything like that at all.
Right. Okay. All right, I just, it's like, what are we doing? Why?
It's the structure of the developer that's determining like if he is the housing trust, their structure is that those will always be affordable housing. We've approved their new subdivision according to the standards that we have in the town. They have set the limit on what that development will be.
Yeah, like so like for them, like they, it's their mission. So like they're going to get funding that requires them to certain percentage, but like to the girl's point, like the town could go a step further and say like, look, if you're going to do cluster X number, I mean, it kind of comes up a little bit, the attainable workforce, where again, there's more bonuses, the higher percentage of the development that's considered attainable housing. So you get like a 33% density bonus rounded up. If you have at least 50% of the units as attainable housing, then you get a 75% density bonus rounded up. If 100% of their residential units are attainable housing, so you can do incentives like that. Or you could do like the, you know, the carrot, the stick. You could have a stick that just flat out, you know, prevent someone from having like any of these be short-term rental. If you're going to get any bonuses at all from these, it's nothing that prevents them from doing that.
I mean, I mean, my point is the town needs to figure out how it's actually going to tackle the affordability problem and how it's going to tackle, what is our perception of what it means to have a community and to try to maintain a community? And if we, if we just leave it to the person with the deepest pockets, because it's always going to be the developer who wants to come in and not necessarily build affordable housing. You know, they're going to see, let's, let's carve up another piece of mountain dessert to build lots of little cottages to rent. And as a community, it's not my decision to make. As a community, I think we, we should be trying to grapple with that, trying to figure out if that's in our long-term the long-term interests of the community to allow that sort of thing to happen. But I've said my piece on that, so. So is there anything else about the cluster section to talk about?
No, I think just the nuances of like doing the common area just a little bit. So there's a couple of structures, a couple of structures that ownership of the common area can go because so there's the basic one where the development entirely stays private and the common area is owned by the residents once they join that community. But the common area could also go into ownership by a conservation agency like the land trust or the town itself could be offered ownership. Again, like say there's a beach, the town would like to preserve all public access to the beach. And it's not guaranteed through, like, there's no land trust interested in that. The town could step in and be the owner. And so there just are some steps to follow for that type of ownership and making sure that the select board approves. So like a condition of the plan would either be approval from the select board for ownership of that land or they had to go to select board first to get that approval before going back to the planning. Select boards agreed to do this, so we can like approve the project with that in mind.
So the developer owns some and the town will be the ones on?
The developer will be the, and there will be the common area that, I mean, could have partial ownership, I guess, where it's the developer obtained some of the town, only one of the ownership part of it, but.
So would they, they would own it, would that become a different lot at that point?
So the common area is technically a different lot, but it's not like counted as a lot number. It's like just called common area.
Oh, okay.
So if the plan, like you'll have your lot number, it's where the development's going to happen, but the common area won't have a lot number, it'll just be labeled common.
Well, that, how would that go against water in determining the unit numbers?
So you're trying to determine the bonus, you're looking at the entire developable area, all of that land and then doing your math back from that. It's like if there's wetlands, I want to give them count that, correct land. But if you're looking at but yeah, you look at the whole area, the whole lot area, including the common area and the develop layer, the area that is going to be built on. And then work back from there with the bonus like number in mind, so that that's what gives the developer the ability to get more units into a smaller space because they get to act like they have the density of all
But they don't.
Lot, but they're just squeezing it into a smaller.
But then the town, just like say it's 10 acres and they do, they got five and then the town gets five, but you're basing their bonus density on the lot as a whole.
Yeah.
But then the town ends up, oh, they get this, that happens. Town ends up only five acres, but then it's not a separate lot, but it's owned by someone else, but that land is, how can it go?
In that situation, if the town buys that land or except, I guess they won't buy it, but accepts that land because they accept ownership of the common area, then it would get like a lot and a fire with that, so that's from the town.
Yeah, but then that lot, that development's already got its approval, you know, based on 10 acres, but now the town owns five.
Yeah, but it's still common, it's part of that subdivision.
Okay.
So like.
That doesn't make any sense to me.
But the town can't develop, the town.
The race of like the common area would still apply to it, but now it's just in, you know, town ownership instead of development ownership.
That would make the town liable if anything happened to anybody on that property.
You know, that why.
We should never have.
But that would go into the question of whether or not the town would ever want to accept.
I would say it's probably not something that'll happen ever regularly, but it's in here just in case.
It's just confusing.
So I guess, I mean, it is. But it's just more like, again, like if, so if the town accepts ownership of the land, it's the same as if they accepted land anywhere. They're just bound by whatever rules were set up by the subdivision, because now they're.
So it's not like an easy ban or?
No. No.
The actual.
Ownership, but they have to follow slate out in.
Now, see, that would confuse me in reviewing a subdivision if one was in front of me like.
Yeah.
If I was one of those board members.
Well, I don't make.
No, I'm just saying, totally right.
It's just complicated land.
I guess, oh my god.
And I'm still trying to figure out what the confusion is, but I mean, everybody knows what's going on. It's like ten acres.
It's like, well, the town could just have, like, it's getting land, but they're not really involved in the subdivision, but the subdivision just got these bonuses, but part of the bonuses. Has the opportunity to own that land.
But how's that confusing? Confusing, I mean, how do you not think that's confusing?
Because I see it as a whole. I see the project as a whole. It's a cluster something.
I see confusion in it or might be in. What am I, I mean, the basin, they got ten units out of ten acres, but now there's five acres of land that the developer has developed and owns. And the town owns the other five.
Not ten acres then.
Exactly, that's my.
Well, it was.
It wasn't.
Still ten acres on the face of, there are still ten acres.
Five other dwelling units on.
Are still ten acres on the face of the earth.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, I understand that, but oh, different ownership just and then becomes separate law. I guess we'll deal with that when.
So yeah, they're giving up the land they could have developed for public good, and so that's why they get the bonus even after they don't.
Yep, sounds great.
I hope nobody sits down with me on one of these. Okay.
That was all I have for common for slots there.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, have we ever had anybody? I know at one point there is one person who owns like thirty-five acres in town and has. Toied with the idea in the past and then talked about a cluster subdivision. Because they're inspired by cluster subdivisions they've seen in other states and other, but I. That conversation, I I don't know where that conversation went. I I was clued into it for a little while and then it kind of disappeared.
I see more like convention.
Yeah. Okay.
Which the next ones are kind of like.
Oh, god.
Well, there's not like a common area to. There's often the common area, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't have that feeling, so.
Can I say something about governing homeowners associations? I've had the misfortune to be in numerous homeowners associations. In places other than the wonderful place I live now. And those other homeowners associations all have one page of rules and they have twenty pages. Of what will happen if you do not follow these rules.
Yes.
And since I've been in Maine for the same, since the last century. Uh, any. Association rules here never have that other half.
So it's really just a cultural difference. So being, I'm from Maryland, so lots of them are associations there. They're terrible. Associations before I moved up here. Um, and they serve a very different purpose in rural Maine, where as a town planner, I was very thankful for them because I knew the town did not have resources to. Splat every road or repave every private room, things like that. So home association slash road associations. Play all much more important and benevolent like role, I think, up here than they did in Maryland, where it really was like NIMBY. Empowerment or like exclusionary housing.
Like you can have any drapery lining you want, as long as it's a waiter off point.
They have the rules like. We're talking about, and you get property owners that are in there, a lot of chickens, let's just say. But in specific in the covenants, you cannot have them, but yet.
And you, and you sign a document that you agree to these.
The developer and they say, oh, it's okay.
I I would guess here that. I could hire an attorney. To, you know, bring a suit against my neighbor who's breaking the covenants.
Yeah, so.
Where these other ones, if you break the covenants, you know, all this can happen without any. Litigation like that, I believe. And it, and it ends up saying, and to put a lien on your house.
You get the Spanish Inquisition.
Oh, yeah, oh, boy, it's.
You would have to go to court to like to get the lien. That's when the home association definitely has to go to court. But yeah, for the fines and stuff, you know, you've got enough signed up to agree to those rules and terms.
Yes, if we.
But it's not here, so.
Is in the planning board, it says that we approve the homeowners association bylaws.
Well, that's what I was, I was asking you about earlier, and it sounds like it's, it's, if you read the whole thing in the first. Phrase in that, it's specifically with respect to common areas and that sort of thing and making sure that.
My new list in the bullet points too, like that we're all allowed to make sure that. That again, fiscal capacity is mentioned, which is gonna, something you have to do anyway. There's. Membership is mandatory for all purchasers, which you wanna see. Yeah, that's pretty typical, but you just wanna make sure that people have the options that people can just opt out and the road never gets taken care of or whatever common area. So we're taking care of. The association obviously can't afford maintenance of common area property. You can see that, again, to make sure that everything is taken care of. Run down facilities. And then. It's just saying that, and make sure that it's an association that will actually collect fee to pay for all this maintenance. Um, so just, just making sure that the common area exists and that those couple things are in there. That's why you're really checking for, which these are standard things that are gonna be in that document anyway.
Right, I mean, if they, if the people who are developing this wanna have other provisions, let's say there's a curfew at nine o'clock. Then that's, they're entitled to do that. But that's beyond the scope of what we have to concern ourselves.
Breaking like federal law, you could note that to them if you notice.
Sure, sure, sure.
I could use where I live now. And we have a private road, we do not have an association.
You don't necessarily have.
No.
Well, like a planned subdivision now, just a bunch of.
It is a subdivision, he's in a subdivision.
It is, it is subdivision.
Yeah, yeah, you own, you own a subdivision, oh, early two thousands. One planning board.
Wasn't on the planning board then.
Well, in any event, let's, maybe we should.
Okay.
Set that aside for now.
Association, I can talk to you afterwards.
I have a road association. That I have to pay annual dues to maintain my level. And we do have covenants, we have, you know, martial businesses. But that's, you know.
I mean, in general, I have not seen. A bad homeowners association being, since I've gotten here, they've all been pretty simple, like just really focused on maintenance and that sort of thing. Not been any. Our harbor would be the place I'd think around here to have. But like have very like overly burdensome like homeowners association rules and stuff like that.
Right.
Um, but I have not like personally read through files and. Our harvest discussed that with the annual review committee, which kind of in some way filled his role.
That's only on Route three, isn't it? In that area, in the historic districts?
I thought it was.
Yeah, I think it's downtown.
It's all along Route three, downtown, downtown. With the historic districts, I'm not in a large district. Some rural.
Okay, should we go on to attainable housing subdivisions?
So yeah, just lays out the purpose initially, talk about increasing high quality housing for purchaser rent by households of moderate income. As defined in the definition section. Um, you know, reduce the economic stratification as a demographic. Right, infrastructure support a high volume of life, the households and residents. So. Area doesn't, which, you know, we talk about this, it really doesn't have to be a minimum area. I think that's might have been, I was just listing for workforce, so. But generally, like in the clusters where it goes subdivision where you're granting more density. You want there to be a lot area now, and for cluster makes a lot of sense where you're requiring open space, cuz it just don't. You know, like in this point, you don't wanna give someone a bonus. Then there'll only be like. An acre of open space or something like that. It's not that like valuable to the town to preserve for that density bonus. And to make the map where if you do need like a certain amount of space, just to make it worthwhile to developer that they can fit more units. In person, the district. Um, so I said, really, either I said or it was already in here, sorry to remember, but. Uh, the three acres was the minimum to do attainable housing. Again, I don't think we need that, and I would honestly. I might only keep that in there if it's a land subdivision, but you could totally do an attainable housing structure subdivision where you would need far less land.
Right.
You said three acres, correct?
Uh, yes.
I just wanna make sure I got that.
Where's it, where's this say that?
Three acres.
It's on top of page four.
You think three acres is a bidding cesser?
So, but you're doing, but you could do an attainable structure where.
But if you're trying land and trying to get more development. Right? More lots.
Yeah, well, again, if you're doing land, you probably would need something like three acres anyway, just so.
I think three is excessive.
Even for land?
I was only just like three, five.
It's too hard.
Two, three, five acres, I mean. I, I, you know, I just think three acres is way too much.
I was just thinking of like, if you had an acre and you tried to, so like in. Let's just say, if you got, like, it's somewhere downtown and you get the five thousand square feet that you really have. Water and sewer, you can fit like eight units-ish on there. If, yeah, like the size of a road or driveway or parking area, it's probably not eight units, it's probably seven, six or seven units. But so then that's like by right, and then if you wanna do the density bonus, and again, you're just playing. You would have to like be able to split those units into like thousand foot, you know, thousand square foot lots. If you're gonna make them, if they're already five thousand square feet. How much more can you actually reduce them to make them like buildable lots? If you're just doing, if you're doing land, like a single family owner, whatever, maybe duplex or something like that.
Subdivision is three or more.
Well, then a five year, right now anyways, well, then a five year period.
Yeah, soon it is. Um, for land, it's still three or more lots, but if you're doing a structure. Uh, with units, it's five or more units.
I don't know if. Three acres seems. Like a lot. Where there's public water and sewer.
Well, this is except where there's public waters. So it's three acres if you're not committed to waters.
You're doing septic as well.
Right.
Oh, except where there's, okay, got you. Okay, that makes more sense.
Why do we, uh, in that section? Why do we use the language working families? We do say working families and residents. Um, in the purpose. Where are you? Uh, uh, four point five point two on page three. You say that the purpose of an attainable, attainable housing subdivision is to encourage the development of high quality neighborhoods and housing units attainable for rent or purchase. By working families and residents of the town of Montesert. Older people? Who?
So I think the way that I wrote this.
Is that included in residents?
Working was only supposed to really, I mean, you could take out that part, but just say families and residents. The working was only really supposed to qualify families and residents was everybody else.
Right. And what is, in terms of my prior. Conversation about rentals, you know, short term rentals, what is the word residents do in there to that concept? Does that not indicate that this is for people who are residents? I mean, residents have a specific.
And that would be the purpose of the town making, but and so you could have that purpose and then not achieve that purpose. But yeah, like, I mean, the town could put in, you know, a requirement saying that it has to be for, there's all the sign ADU. Uh, involved in. The attainable housing subdivisions, there can be a. Like a lease requirement or, I mean, if you're renting or leasing.
Now, one of the things that in this article I mentioned to you in the Press Herald about the condo complex that they're gonna build, that they're specifically using. It was in the paper today, they're specifically using the density requirements to boost what they can do, the new density laws. They are gonna have ADU units integral to, my reading of this is not that they're gonna have ADU units that are in the affordable. Units, they're gonna be a total of like hundred fifty units, thirty-nine workforce and thirty-nine. Affordable, but my sense is that they're not gonna have those ADUs. In those units cuz that would drive the price. Um, but they are including them right in, and they specifically say. You could have an, a relative, a multi-generational family, or you could rent it to, to augment your income. So, I mean, there, there are. There, I mean, this is an example of, of a. Project that the Portland Planning Board approved yesterday, um, or the day before.
Right, and I don't know, I haven't looked at the project. At least in certain parts of town, I, I don't know exactly where that one is, so they already do require like a certain percentage of housing to be. Uh, affordable, and then if you're, if not.
Well, I think it's because to get the density bonus, they're, they're talking about doing that for the density bonus that they get to, they get to build this.
Oh, just with the, the state.
Well, I mean, they've got, they've got. They've got four acres that they're gonna do this on. And on, under prior ordinances, you could maybe, you could get thirteen houses on that. But instead, because of the state statutes, you're not gonna be able to build. These condos with a hundred, total of like a hundred fifty units on them. And common facilities and including a dog washing station, which I thought was.
Instead of working families, do we have qualifying families?
Okay, I just took out the word working, I was gonna put for families.
Yeah, we just. We just take out the.
Throw in the phrase primary residence.
Well.
Somewhere. Cuz I'd be.
I would like that.
That would, that, yeah, I mean, that, that assumes you are at least six months on a day.
Yeah.
Living in Maine.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Five, same as year round.
Um, I mean. Yeah.
Probably is, yeah.
This is your primary resident.
Did your primary resident, you voted Gary Rutter in the winter.
Right.
This is your.
This is your primary residence.
Yeah. You vote here, you pay taxes here, you.
Yeah.
Your resident.
I don't, like, you want me to put the word primary in front of residents?
Attainable for rent or purchase as primary residences for working families or.
Yeah.
And residents of town or something like that.
I don't know if we need working in there, but I, I like.
Well, we've already taken it out. I mean, at least in conversation.
Having the, uh, main resident.
And so like, yeah, I'll just read. For rent or purchase as a primary residence for, then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then. Again, I could add a definition of primary residence.
Yeah.
Which is not currently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, if you don't know if the community's comfortable with that one phrase.
I'd be really, honestly, I'd be really surprised if the community's not comfortable with that. I mean, if, if, if we are, then why are we bothering to continue to talk about affordability? Like, don't. Just something else to talk about.
Needs to exist.
And then you said the density bonuses and all those things are gonna have to be retouched because of the statute changes.
Back and done.
Yeah.
Look like I have a couple of pages where I would draw in squares and cut in. Cuz again, it might just not be a bonus in. Or realistic bonus, cuz like I mentioned before. If a product is spent in the bubble of water and sewer, you'd be able to have a minimum lot size of seventy-five. Five thousand square feet of bonus.
When, um. Something I had that was, reads funny, four point five point two, B two. Attainable housing subdivisions involving the splitting of land and water and. Oh, okay, I just thought the grammar was a little rough in, on page four. Roman numeral two. Um, uh, Roman numeral two. Uh, so, for attainable housing subdivisions involving the splitting of land and water and sewer are present. Um. There should be like, that grammar should be. Changed a little bit there.
Like a comma with water and sewer.
Yes, some, something though. Regarding affordability and referring to federal. That's how we've always done it. Is it wise to generate new ordinances relying on anything? Any diff, any? Federal definition?
Alright, what's, so you're saying like the definition of attainable?
Yeah, the definition, yeah, like the medium income and all this stuff relying to on, on, I mean, how? We can do all of this and then all of a sudden those. Federal laws disappear these days. I mean, I, I'm just wondering how we, how we deal with that, how we, cause I think everything is up for grabs right now, with stuff like this. I mean, I'm kinda surprised that HUD hasn't closed, actually.
You, I mean, you could just move this. Cite it into the United States Department of Housing, blah, blah, blah. These were ju, these are definitions that like the state put out with LE two thousand and three.
I guess maybe we just leave them in there and then if things go crazy, the state's gonna have to adjust how they determine those. Yeah. Okay.
Affordability, affordable, I guess, um, sorry, we can say attainable because. Zone specific bonuses. I, it's the. Areas that are meant for residential housing. Uh, VC, VR one, VR two, VR one, and then VR two. Um. If one hundred percent of the units are conveyed as attainable housing and catch the water and sewer. Right, that's another bonus, but like, did that concept seem okay, giving like the highest possible? Density bonus to those zones or?
Mm-hmm.
Like the seventy-five percent bonus, whatever, and something seemed like a good max.
Mm-hmm. There was a, there's a provision and maybe I'm jumping ahead here, but. I'm comparing affordable to attainable. And.
I like the word attainable better than affordable.
Well, they're two different metrics. Um, the affordable housing subdivision. Basic requirements be, there'll be five and six, and you get down to water supply, the developers should provide evidence that water capacity for the development is adequate. Per blah, blah. And I don't see that in. The prior attainable housing subdivision requirements, and maybe I'm missing it, but I don't know why. That wouldn't be important for those two.
Definitely seeing attainable, so you're saying it's an affordable with that?
I see it in. Affordable but not attainable.
That's a different spot in. So, attainable, sorry, so affordable. Uh, at the water supply.
Yeah, on page six.
Requirement from LE two thousand and three. Um. So I guess the only water supply piece for attainables on page five, at number nine, we talked about. The lot sizes of twenty thousand square feet are last talked along, it shall be connected to. Common water supply and distribution system, either public or private.
So. Right. But if we're talking about allowing big density. Um, on lots. No matter whether it's attainable or affordable, you're still gonna need water.
Yeah, so, yeah. This was already in the ordinance under the affordable housing, it's from LE two thousand and three, because one of the requirements of LE two thousand and three was to specifically call out water supply.
Mm-hmm.
Where you're gonna be reviewing for our supply, no matter what kind of subdivision it is in the, just.
In the general subdivision. Okay.
But it is redundant.
Okay.
Affordable, but I think it's in there because LE two thousand and three specifically said it has to be connected, we had to talk about water supply on review. But again, I probably could remove that, cause we aren't gonna do it anymore.
Okay, alright, I just wanna make sure that it is an issue for, since pretty basic issue, some of my favorite issues. Um.
Those that are, uh, on page six, letter C, um. One of the new things from the state with that. Affordable housing developments give a fourteen foot or one story. But just say they changed the word, it's have to be given at least a fourteen foot bonus, so. Town can choose to give a greater than fourteen foot height bonus. Uh, to those structures, which is one story, but the minimum you have to give is a fourteen foot bonus.
So if you're forty now, they can go to fifty-four.
If it's an affordable. So I would.
Can't do that, I'm sorry, in shoreline zone.
No, shoreline is still. But yeah, if it's outside of shoreline zone, you can do that. We have to allow that in fourteen foot.
The off-street parking requirement. Are those limited in terms of what we can require by state law? I fail to understand why we don't expect, I'm, well, I'm in the, I'm in the, uh, affordable. On page six.
You don't understand what?
I, I fail to understand why we don't grapple with the reality of parking requirements and the reality of the existence of vehicles. So we're gonna only require two parking spaces for every three dwelling units.
Well, you're not. Uh, the future conversation about another state law came out.
Is it, yeah, is it, so this is a state law, this is?
Well, this, yeah, this specific one was at LE two thousand and three, the bonus for affordable housing, um, does state require?
Okay.
And then, yeah, there's a future one about how you can't require parking. Can't require more than like one parking space per dwelling unit.
You can't allow that, I mean, you can't require that?
Towns will not be, will not require more than one parking space per dwelling.
I mean, how many families have one car? I mean, it's kind.
I mean, you know, it's a little give and take, you know, like they're trying to encourage development with all these things in walkable places, but.
Right, I mean, what you can, what you can do in, with a city with a public transportation system is, is one thing. But that's very small portion of the state domain.
Yeah.
But that's a policy decision that we're not in charge of. Nobody asked.
And, uh, well, I wanted to say that, like, uh. Just as a developer, like when they come, they're, I would be surprised if a developer doesn't offer like, this is our parking spaces at an apartment complex. Like show parking spaces for multiple cars.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when it comes to affordable, you're also talking about people that might not own cars at all. Uh, again, will they be living in Mount Desert? I don't know, but, uh, compared to other parts of the state, where there are more services and.
Yeah, you'd have a hard time getting to work without.
Right.
To be able to afford the.
Yeah, I would be surprised if a developer came in and tried to do the minimum parking spaces without consideration for quality of life or how their residents would use the. Development.
Yeah, we just have a, we just have a bunch of, I mean, I'm still thinking back to the. One of the bigger projects in town, we had to approve that. I just don't think there's any way possible they're actually gonna park, have room for all the vehicles that are actually gonna use that facility. But we couldn't do anything about it.
What's the basic difference between attainable and affordable subdivisions?
It's a definition of income.
Definition of income, so.
Thank you.
Attainable is.
Attainable, I think I have, uh, uh, hundred, or it's two hundred and fifty percent of median area income. Eighty percent.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So attainable can rent to people who are technically like, under the affordable classification, but they also have the opportunity to rent to people who make more.
Rent or sell, right?
Person.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have questions at this point about? Attainability and affordability, um. Knowing that they're gonna have to be massaged because of the state. Changes in the, in this grid that.
My only one was the, uh, the acreage. That we talked about.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable question, personally.
Get rid of that, and then they have much. With the math and that, and whatever someone can come up with in terms of. Like if a lot is actually big enough. Um, it's like I have the three acres for no water and sewer and two acre, well, the two acres for water, two doesn't go in, but. Yeah, I can just take out those requirements and just see. Just see what happens.
Mm-hmm. So in that case, you took out the requirements, you're limited to. State. Septic.
Well, for an individual lot, yes, but in terms of the whole project, then they could try and do this. On whatever size lot they have and try and make it work, however.
Right, they could do a common.
Alright, so if they have like a one acre lot, they can still try and do a split of that land to be. Like meet these bonuses and try and fit as many units as they can on one acre without needing two or three acres to try and.
But they're still gonna need to. Provide sufficient space for proper septic and that's far enough away from a proper well and. All of that sort of thing, so they're gonna have to meet all those requirements.
Correct, yeah.
So, in other words, kind of lot, the, uh, obviously the lot coverage stuff is kind of radically shifting.
Uh, yeah, I did create a bonus for lot coverage. Uh, that, that is those zone specific ones, I think I up the lot coverage to ninety percent of the lot.
Mm-hmm.
In the VC, VR, B two. It was the idea that they could have a especially small lot, the park building.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I don't think. The town right now, there's a particularly high lot coverage, um. Allowance, I think maybe VC is the highest one.
Right.
The rest, VR one, VR two are forty percent, so, so are VR one and VR two. So definitely allow for like a. More compact housing development.
So almost the highest. VC, building C. You said seventy?
Seventy-five. Uh, next is mobile home parks.
Yeah.
Just discussions about this, emptying Luso committee before they broke. I. A change was that they recommended, and then. You know, I'm. Not entirely sure, uh. Actually, I think it's state law, so I'll pass. Don't conflict with this, actually, um. Because they had already allowed five thousand square feet per lots from a mobile home park served by water and sewer, and they allowed, they provide the twenty thousand if you're not. And so the question, the question that came up was, um. Looking at page seven, B, it lists the type of sewer systems that can be used in a mobile home park, and there was a portion. That originally talked about central. Like centrally shared sewer systems, but then weren't public. And talking to Kim, and he mentioned that this town doesn't allow it that way, that wasn't sure, town then had to allow, mobile home parks, you know, but. There was nothing in there that said, really said that you have to require them, it's just like if you offered them as an option, you have to have a certain lot size, I just took that part out. Uh, because the town doesn't allow that type of septic, uh, regulation anyway.
Why, why not? Is there a reason? Why that's a bad idea?
I don't know why, it's in there.
Okay.
I think you would wanna encourage that, actually, instead of having all the separate systems.
Yes, I would think so too.
Well, issues become set.
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially.
More containment install.
Do you think there's gonna be more cluster subdivisions or things like that? It makes it easier to have a shame.
Yeah, for sure.
Maybe we ought to flag that as something we want to.
But some people.
It should be, it, it should be a lot.
Well, maybe we ought to flag that as something we wanna.
Yeah, it's a stuff.
I was like, it's all to the benefit of the residents.
Exactly, it's just on the ground, you know, you're like, well, no.
Yeah, most of the stuff in the stuff that were on the mobile home park, uh. Are either state required or just like normal stuff that she wouldn't look at. Um. And so there wasn't too much creativity here until you get to. The emergency mobile home park, um.
Sure.
I just added this provision for that. Where, there's, there was no provision really for, you know.
Oh, natural disaster.
There was like a natural disaster or something like that.
Back when we had FEMA, that was a possibility.
Yeah. That might be useless, uh. But yeah, if there was like a flood or.
Mm-hmm.
Something here, so just allow, again, like the emergency response.
Hurricanes.
Set up a, uh, temporary emergency mobile home park without coming for planning or approval, but they do have to talk to the town and get town approval for certain things.
Right. No, a- again, I will ask my water question, in a mobile home park that is not connected to town water. Um, how do we, what are our standards for making sure that there's adequate? It's part of the normal subdivision process, okay? Alright.
And I mean, I think there is something about. Might just be something. Yeah, I don't think actually, I don't think there's anything specifically about wells in the, in the home park, so. You just follow the town's normal subdivision.
Okay, good.
Are the roads, sorry, are the roads standards under mobile home park?
They're different.
Are they different than?
Yeah, that's all state required, I mean, you can't change that, what I have is.
No, I'm just, if they're privately owned, right?
Yes, well, mobile home park should be, or generally gonna be private, yeah, I don't think, shouldn't, but.
The roads would be.
Could be, but sometimes towns are asked to take over roads.
Right, so there's a provision, you know, this is a state for required, but it's like roads of mobile home park, they're to be dedicated to the town for acceptance, town ways. Should be designed and constructed in accordance to the town's standards. Uh, however, if they're not, like if they're gonna be private, then there are different standards that they. Um, can build to, so their runway width can be up to twenty-three feet. And their, their paved travel way can be up to twenty feet. And the paved width of a, this part, actually, I put it here, we can change this number. But the paved width of a one-way road would be fourteen point five feet, cause you don't need as much paved space if it's not two-way road.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Fourteen point five can fit a fire truck, pretty well, so that's why I put that in. It's in here for now, not really, and specifically not a subdivision, but I didn't know if I was to put it, but the functional land divisions. Uh. Just a reference to this.
I get the definition, but can you give me, do we have functional land divisions in Monteser? So, it's like. A property that's had. More than one dwelling on it for a long time.
Yeah, usually they predate, well, under our definition, says that has to predate your, uh, ordinance and. Properties have been used kind of the same for many years.
Yeah.
Um, and then as long as you try to give the same, they call it cartilage, but yard area as much as possible. I don't think these, are these allowed in the shoreline zone?
That's allowed anywhere by money.
Oh, well, they're in our ordinance, but I'm just wondering, because functional land divisions, you are dividing a lot, creating two, well, two lots. And they have two dwellings, and, you know, they, they function the same, they're just now separate. They use the same, you know, they got the other certain criteria, but. I don't think they would be allowed in, uh, the, the shoreline zone because you have.
I mean, they're illegal even by definition.
Well. We have them, I know. Few, yeah, since I've been here, I know a few, since I've been here.
Cause it allows you to make a subdivision without coming to plan.
Right.
Following at least subdivision review process.
Well, before.
And the lots don't have to be confirmed.
Well, I don't know if it still is, planning, well, I don't have my ordinance in front of me, but. About the land divisions in the past, John, planning.
Right, but they're not subdivisions, they don't have to follow all the standards.
Yeah, no, they just, there's certain like criteria, that they have to meet, it's like maybe three or four.
Right, but, I, that, that's why they're legal, it's cause the subdivision's supposed to follow the state required, like subdivision. Uh, procedures, and this is exempt from that. Oh, not, they're illegal.
Okay, I mean. Uh, some things that can be different that'll work for his housing.
Uh because you still have to follow all of.
Well, no, I mean, but as far as making the lot smaller and.
What is it different than any other non-conforming use?
Man, it's a subdivision, like it's your, every subdivision, even if it's like workforce or cluster has to come for subdivision review.
Yes.
Density bonus.
Yes.
Like for doing certain things, so but still has to meet all the standards and subdivision ordinance, or these divisions don't have to meet all the standards and subdivision.
Well, why we would allow that does, I mean. I guess the issue is you've got all these pre-existing functional divisions. And now somebody wants to formalize it by splitting the lots and giving separate deeds to individuals, is that what you're?
Well, I mean, one, splitting a lot once into two lots and not a subdivision.
Right. But this one, we're talking three or more.
Oh, it's functional land division, yeah.
I think a functional has to be figured out based on those.
I know of a couple that were not, three or not.
They're just land divisions and that.
Yeah, they couldn't meet the dimensional requirements. And so they allow you to have a smart, you know, kind of somewhat the same yard area. And the buildings predated each other, they were utilized same.
So how would you approach it?
It's been thrown out in sound bit.
I want to start out. Or whatever, make it all work for a thousand.
Or. Make them apply as though it's a. Non-conforming. Under the non-non conformity section.
I mean, I think it's a, for what the purpose of this is, would make sense. Like again, it would make sense for the commerce of the interview, if there's like already a road or driveway there, that doesn't technically need. You know, like road standards for subdivision, because it's all in lot and it's just a bunch of structures in the same lot. Um I think it pre-existed any type of subdivision rules. Um so then like if someone wanted to split it up, maximize the use of that land, because they're not gonna use all those dwelling units on their own anymore. They would then have to come and upgrade their road, which is super expensive. Like I understand why it exists based on. The history I've heard from Kim and Noel, but it's just technically like not allowed.
Yeah, it's just, it's just continuing non-conformity is when the goal should be to extinguish them. Under most.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's just like, okay, so say there is like a subpar road leading to all these dwelling units on one lot and then. They're all sold off all of a sudden. As a functional land division, then you've got just like a subpar development. Without, again, like no home association, like provision, no like. Requirements, um so there might not be like a plan for flow in or anything, if neighbors don't get along. And all of a sudden, the road doesn't get repaired.
Fire trucks can't get there.
You know, how often it happens where maybe it's not even like.
Right, that's the big question, it's like, how how significant an issue is this? Because it's only properties that have had. Dwellings on them before the the subdivision and the land use ordinance were enacted, right? That's. So it may be a.
Three to four that I know, in my tenure.
Uh huh.
Over twenty years.
And so you can have a functional land division, it's not a subdivision, which would make sense, and that's. Two or less, two or two lots.
So that shouldn't even be in the subdivision, aren't?
Well, it's not, the subdivision definition includes three or more lots, which is why that's what you put me. The definition, the land use ordinance doesn't include all provisions. Land use ordinance would allow a functional length of given, that's only two lots.
Now, I would say, I agree with you on the functional land division under the subdivision uh requirements, I don't think that should be allowed.
I can try to think like, I guess, like in a situation where you have that. Especially if clusters is an option and I don't know how it leaves it turn out in reality, but like. You have all those dwellings, it's allowed already. I guess if they're all livable. They've been maintained for so long, they're livable, if you're gonna split them up in the lots that are their own. There's gotta be like some type of room, maybe for the common area or something on the lot, you know, they all just really shoved in there or.
They're all separate lots, um no common area.
So right now, it's all going.
No, it's, it's not one lot. It's a few lots, but they're separated by a road. So they go across, like, because it was all family.
But they're already their own separate blocks.
Yeah, they're already, yeah, but they were like reconfigured, the lots were reconfigured. Some have roads, some have driveways to them, because it's separated by a main road.
So.
This was a long time ago, by the way, and that Fenton represented. And it came to planning board, too, by the way.
So what's the, I don't know, but they're already divided in the lots, what's the division?
Right.
Well, there was. It was a family, but it was also, like I said, they reconfigured lots, they changed them. And then there was like shared subject systems.
But this, but this four point five point five presumes that you haven't divided the land.
Would be if they haven't been divided.
And then the question is. Why would we want to give, I mean, there's no inherent right, if you own a property that's got. Three or more separate dwellings on it, there's no inherent right to turn that into. Separate lots, um just because they happen to be there as separate dwellings.
I mean, you could like sell one lot off at a time and then wait the. Five years and then sell another one, and it wouldn't be a subdivision.
If you could turn it into an acc- a a legal lot.
Right, if you have the size, minimum lots, isn't it?
Right, and then. Maybe we ought to look at what.
So like, do they all have like shared subjects or? No, because like if they have shared subjects, it makes sense to like keep them under a planned like development style.
Yeah.
Where they, they have to have like an association, maintain that subject together. It's interesting.
So I guess what I'm hearing is we need to think further about that and whether or not we, to what extent we think the town should continue to allow. Three or more. Lots to be, non-non conforming lots to be.
That means like you have like those files, there's a left gun before.
Oh, what?
The files for like, I could come look at, just to see what those products were.
Certainly can, sure, by all means, come see, come saw.
Sounds like a good time. So right below that is one of my favorite sections in the ordinance is always definitions, I'm not joking about that.
Yeah, I mean, I put a couple notes to start definitions.
Dictionary definition.
Dictionary, I mean, you could just do Merriam-Webster's Collegiate Dictionary, I put the addition, the most recent as it's been. Pretty sure. Um just so that no one can try and use like a super old edition, but we're gonna have to update that again, we think like the eleventh fall out date.
Why you should, you could, or you could say current, Merriam-Webster's.
Right now, it says the one on file in the town office.
Used by, using the Merriam-Webster's dictionary on file.
Town office, Ken Keen's office.
I mean, I guess that actually don't like that, because then.
No, no, I'm just saying that's what it says on the.
Right, I'm gonna say, because like you would, maybe I could just call and say, what addition to the dictionary do you have, and they can Google.
I seriously don't think it matters.
You don't, you say that, it's all this sense, it doesn't matter for the members.
That's right.
Use the construction. What definitions that Noel and I have.
I will say, but yeah, like so if the town. Yeah, I'll just say the web, maybe just the web version of Merriam-Webster's Collegiate Dictionary, because that will always be the stuff today.
Yes.
And then.
Yes. Not many, I think I still have a paper dictionary somewhere. But it's not the eleventh.
I use it all the time, in my office.
Yeah.
Uh so there's that.
I'll use it online.
Just direct people to the Luso for definitions related to everything land use that are not in these definitions. Just say Luso, as abbreviation to be used move forward. Like that's been pretty simple, again, like I tried to keep out any definitions that I felt.
Here we go, in the definitions, you get the description of affordable housing and attainable housing.
Is the unit property the same as the Luso? That mentioned.
Already, in there, it might not be the same.
Then you have, yeah. We do have.
Yeah, we should make sure they align.
Fine by me, don't care. You have a definition of building, just as a roof structure.
Well, as we go through this, there may be changes, there may be better definitions that we want to put pillars for the losing.
I did look at that one and like, uh yeah, the partial refer reason. Building, this one might actually be the shoreline.
We have that kind of development, then you got dwelling unit, you have residential dwelling in it. Doesn't include. Development we have, the definition in Luso and then.
Yes, I definitely changed the definition of development.
Yeah, dwelling, the unit. Residential dwelling in our ordinance.
Alright, I do believe though that um this is the same as what's in.
This one is.
It should be, but then for like, because there was the multiple types of dwelling units. If I set the dwelling unit one in here and then set for definitions and different types of dwelling.
Yeah, yes.
Because dwelling isn't used in here. Family, again, this is a shoreline zoning definition, actually.
As you said, one or more person, last is five or unrelated. One family or five unrelated.
No, this is.
There's a, a family shall not exceed five persons, not related.
Yeah, so this is, this is, this is like a, I'm pretty sure copying paste from the shoreline zoning stuff. I'm not taking that actually, because I don't use the word family anywhere, I don't believe, except for talking about the Dan Lloyd.
Right.
But it does, but the the cap of people and uh.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's why I left it in here, but might not necessarily be required.
So is floor plan, floor area the same as in the Luso? It includes porches and decks?
Yes.
Okay.
So is footprint.
Okay, good.
These two, I think I did copy, I think all these that I left in here are that are like specifically.
Yeah, they're blue zone, yeah.
Are either in the Luso, but I think they're also just the shoreline zoning definitions from the sleep.
If you get parcel and we have lot, is that's.
Uh I use parcel and tract in here a lot, uh those are the terms I use, so I have them, I have a definition of parcel and say it also means tract. I could put a line in here that says.
Or lock.
Or lot, yeah, I have to read with the definition of lot, isn't, though, but like they're applying in a solid bit in ordinance, then you would only apply these definitions. Because again, the only time you go to Luso, it's specifically cited or the definition's not in here, but yeah, I should compare those two. Let's see how shake so compared to one.
Like street, sea road.
Your structure is different.
Uh huh, okay.
As I said, you know, side or within shoreline zone. Doesn't matter if it's temporary or permanent. Inland or shoreline, it's a obstruction. And here you're saying it's fixed location on the ground, it's inland.
So Kim, does that mean like if somebody puts up a. Semi semi-permanent, like one of those constant garage things.
It's a permit, that's a structure.
That's a structure.
Regardless, it's temporary.
Right, and that.
Already, it's okay.
Right, it's temporary, but it's a structure and you need a permit.
So yeah, just get rid of the within and with the outside.
Yeah.
And then.
Then it's defined what what temporary means and what permanent means, so under six months, I think it is, and over six months.
I think I wished since that was, but I don't think we're ready to change.
Okay.
Yes, the main thing for that one was, if you guys think of any definitions that you would like to see, you know, that would be helpful for you. As we're reading through this whole ordinance.
Yeah, I think at some point, once we get done all the bits and pieces, we probably need to have a section, a s- a session where we commit to reading the whole thing through. And that, so we've got them all now.
Yeah.
Good. Uh and then maybe spend some quality time in the hammock. So we are at twenty-five after seven. Still light outside. Do we want to spend, which do you want to do first? We've got the the land use. We need to actually discuss these or just know that they're gonna be integrated into.
I think we can discuss some.
Okay.
I think I can devote some.
Good, alright.
Just like Ben O'Pitt, just because I think that's the best one. So like Dale said at the beginning, um we have a re discussion about. What like the pros and cons of the site in far, then Kim and I separately had a discussion on. How the town pretty much has a site plan review process, it just calls it conditional use review.
Right.
Not like those really should be two different things. Um and so this site planner view chart. Essentially shows using the existing structures that the town already has, what a site planner you could look like. Um where you see, again, like the main difference really is at the top, where it does only conditionally you supply. If it is only a conditionally used to have your own separate process, which is way simpler to review a conditional use. But then there are going to be times where branches off where it gets both a conditional use and a site planner view, that you review for both. For that project, which is essentially doing what you did now. But instead having to do it for everything that's a conditional use, it's only for the really big projects that are both a conditional use and the major site plan. So what's missing from the ordinance in order to accomplish this now, or thresholds and definitions for like major site plan review? Minor site interview, meaning in theory, you then break up a separate site plan review process, but you kind of already have the bones for that. So it's not really like creating something new, you're just. Calling it, it's putting it in its own spot and calling it something different. And so like really the major missing pieces, setting the thresholds, because right now you have a minor site plan review, just called the CEO permit. You have a major site plan review, it's called a conditional use. So you just split those out. The CEO permit become the minor site plan review and conditional use, as you use it now would be the major site plan review. And then some conditional use would be a much more narrow and shorter view. Unless it's also a major site plan, it's like for a fence, that's the conditional use, right?
Yeah, well, certain side.
Some side, that's what I'm saying, like a conditional use permit would not need as, for a fence would never need like a. As thorough as site planner review as you guys parents would do, you could just go for a conditional use review of a fence, and you're really just reviewing that one section of the ordinance for fences.
So you're, and you're not getting the massive document with all the papers you throw out. That would be, just from a bureaucratic point of view, that would be nice for everybody, I think, to.
Yeah, I think it just organizes things a lot better and it saves your guys' time.
And confusion and difficulty for the applicant.
Right, applicants have a much easier time understanding, again, for simple projects that might be the condition or. Use and that might make sense, but it's not as much burdens in front of the fill out the application or ask him to fill out for them. And then it's a much easier review for you all, because you only have to look at the one condition lease section that it applies.
Well, that would be a great and good thing, I don't, I'm trying to figure out, does it create more work at your level, Kim? Well, that would be a great and good thing, I don't, I'm trying to figure out, does it create more work at your level, Kim, or do you pretty much go through that all anyway?
I go through it all.
Yeah, like this is gonna apply and this is not gonna apply.
And it wouldn't, again, unless you go into the table of uses and start changing. Uh, you know, what is this? What is a CEO permit versus a planning board permit versus just like allowing to build permit? When I've had an initial discussion on that, just going through and. Starting to like say like there are certain things that you can build without. Like going through a full CEO permit. That just you have to come and fill out the build permit, but then that's it. Again, a single family dwelling, if you're just building one. Probably don't need too much information on your stormwater, um, you can just go get a build permit for it, but. Just building up like making some of these more streamlined and lower barrier to development. Of course, certainly, I mean, like in the town, as it or like the request information from an applicant, billion thousands. Something that time wants, and like building a single family home should be as easy as possible.
So what? Would be in a major site plan review that we. Or how would, how would we process it differently than what we do now?
Yep, so. I had originally drafted a development application, um, that came out to look at first. And I still have to make some changes to it, but it'd be like one development application for subdivisions and, uh, major site plan reviews. Where you, it'd be pretty thorough, like they have to fill that out. Um, again, this is probably a project, this is a project that's big enough that. They're probably hiring somebody to help. Well, if they're the owner or developer, so it's not like an individual is just trying to fuddle through, they hired a professional. Uh, project manager for them. So it's super easy for that person to fill out. And, and it goes, they have to, there's a list that's attached with the, for due diligence items, similar to like, to subdivision review, where you have to show as water. Sewer, uh, circulation of vehicles, parking, all that.
Right.
And those requirements are listed. Within the application, but they, you should have to provide documents outside of their application answers. For the diligence portion, probably tell them what they have to provide. And then. I'll turn it into Kim like I do with a subdivision application or anything. Um, Kim can do an initial review of it, just to make sure like. It's not crappy, like, you know, maybe they turn in the application, I don't even know the diligence, and she can be like, I can't go on the plan. But other than that, you know, goes through consent to you guys. You review it, and similar, it'd be two meetings probably. And or three, like sketch plans should probably be encouraged for like major site plan reviews, then you have your preliminary and your final. Um, as well, and then. It's very similar to your subdivision review. And I guess your conditional use review, in terms of process, is just again, calling it something else, and setting thresholds so that. Again, there might be uses that sometimes are major site in review, if they pass a threshold, like if they, it's five thousand square feet of. Floor area or certain amount of, uh, soil disturbance. Or then trigger it from being allowed to use a dwelling to build permit up to a planning board review level.
I had a question, I just lost it, it'll come back. And then the minor site planner, you let's go to that, I mean, how, 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 do you see breaking points, the, the breakpoint there in your head?
Yeah, again, it's a threshold thing, so it's so. You could go, I have to talk to Kim more about how she, uh, to envision this, but again, so if there's thresholds for a major site planner view. You can require, like again, there's the CEO permit departments now. For certain uses, you can always have like a use. Regardless of what the impact is via site plan review. So it would either be code review or planning board review. But then you could also have projects that are smaller. That might need a little bit more thorough look. So like, again, I don't think you're gonna get a drive-through of some sort of desert, but like if there were the drive-through, it's a pretty popular type of development where. It's small, in theory, in terms of footprint.
Or grocery store, or something, something big like.
Well, yeah, it actually doesn't have to be, like, the, the drive-through, this is a, and look at. But like the traffic impacts are potentially pretty impacted, because of the queuing. Like go out to the road or something like that, it's not reviewed thoroughly. And so like, the code office has that opportunity to say, okay, this is normally a minor site review because of the square footage. But because of the queuing and traffic issues, it must have the planning board.
Okay.
For a more thorough review.
Okay.
Uh, that would be at the discretion of the code office.
How would we? Deal with compatibility in this world? But would we articulate that more and leave it? Better defined and then.
So when you think compatibility, you mean like fitting the character, or I would mean the.
Like six A one. There, there's a big. Bruhaha about that often. Wouldn't that be an opportunity to try to define? What we mean by compatibility and in major or minor site plan reviews?
Maybe, I mean, I think like, depends, like if you're talking about specific uses, you want to do that there necessarily, if you don't want specific use on some of the table uses. Just.
Sure.
And create this use that you, if there's a use you don't wanna see in town, or something like.
Right.
You add that to the table uses and just say not allowed.
Right.
Anywhere. Uh, if you're looking for like design standards. I make compatibility, that portion lends itself, whereas kind of like alluding to a different form of zoning. Than the zoning that's in town now, which seems like it's more like form based zone. Where you're not so much worried about the use necessarily, but you're looking at. Have this like the structure itself that amongst the rest of the town visually and impact wise. And so that's a whole different like form of zoning than what's.
Right, I mean, there's a difference of opinion among individuals on this board, my unease is always around giving individual. Board members discretion to determine. What's, what's compatible and what isn't, and.
Yeah, I mean, I don't like it, uh, I think it's, I mean, I don't like design review boards, I don't like anything that really. Kind of like takes away, perhaps like a burden, I mean, the town has a right in specific areas, like we have a historic downtown and all the. Buildings should stay that same because it's an economic driver, tourism driver, like. You, I mean, it makes sense to me to have like a specific zone overlays and says like design standards for this zone or this, because. This is like a core part of our identity and brings people to the town and all that. But across the whole town, like. What is compatibility, what is character, like that's where things supposed to evolve, uh.
Yeah, because, and that's the problem with like, this is, uh, this is the character of our community, it is right now. But should it, but is this the best we can do? And is, should it always be like this? I mean, I always have.
You know, I. Yeah, I personally don't like the compatibility requirement, I understand why metallic mountain dessert has it, um. And so that's just really part of, again, like a community conversation at a comp plan level, or.
Yeah.
Outside where it's like.
Yeah.
Do we still feel wed into like? We've always been, or like, where are the parts of town where we want it to remain the same, and there's like a use to that, like in like the downtown or main street? But like, are there other parts of town where we can be more flexible? Uh, there are other tools, I would say, outside of like. Type in review that have more control over that, then. Maybe, in this case, you do have a requirement for compatibility, which is pretty subjective, some of it, some of it's actually pretty, like, does it add density, that's like measurable, but.
Right, but six A one is pretty subjective.
Right, most of it is pretty subjective.
Yeah, yeah. And it takes a very timeframe, narrow. Time window, it's like, this is how it is now, and therefore this is how it should be, and. That's a value judgment, the town can make that value judgment. But, I'm not. Not sure why. That's just me, I mean. Change is hard, I know.
Culture, changes are.
Changes are. Okay. So I guess it will be up to s- some among us to fi- uh, the board to figure out. If we want to look at something more fleshed out than this, when and.
Well, I guess next step, so it would also just be pretty low barrier, is like just bring in examples of other towns that have site plan reviews.
Yeah.
And then discuss them, like you can read them at a time and talk about what you like, questions you have.
Yeah.
Things you'd like more information on.
Yeah, cause it definitely doesn't sound like an immediate work project, but something to. How does this, how does this, what's our ultimate goal in reorganizing the ord- and streamlining the ordinances? And how does this or doesn't fit in with that process?
Right, well, there'd be a chance to see like. This is using really good language, mostly structures that aren't exist in the town, hopefully you'll see what other structures could exist also. That next time I'll bring an example and talk about it.
Great, thank you. Alright, LD eighteen two nine updates.
Summary, I'm gonna skip eighteen twenty-nine, that's the longest for now, I've got twenty minutes. Uh, it was four twenty-seven first, this is the parking, uh, bill. Two major changes. Uh, with town, we now require one law free parking for dwelling unit for residential development. And municipality may require parking maximums. Uh, so you're saying you can't have more than. X number of parking spaces per development, regardless of how many dwelling units you have. Uh, but the idea is to reduce the number of parking spaces, um. And then. You can also have, um. Parking management strategies, which again, I don't know if they would necessarily apply here unless the town. Developed more public parking elsewhere, but. Then you only revolves around public transit, public parking elsewhere. Um, like a more urban setting.
Yeah.
And then, the second part is that municipality must allow developers to use off-site parking agreements with existing parking facilities. With a quarter mile of the development. Again, like I don't, it's like dislike this provision, I just don't know if it really applies in the real world, super well in rural Maine.
Right.
Um, cause of. Flat and super easy to walk here, but it also be super steep though.
It could be a sunny day, it could be sleepy.
Well, the weather, I don't mind quite so much, cause like, you know. I've walked, you know, quarter mile in the city before when it was raining, it's just like, that's what you did, but, um. I think also. Just different, cause again, a lot of times there's just.
Yeah, the question is, what have you just been to Hannaford's?
And so, yeah, so if a developer comes in, they have an agreement with. So the, the thing about these off-site parking agreements is that. Whatever number of parking spaces have to be allowed for their development has to be. At this, uh, facility specifically that designated for their use of, so it's not like.
Yes.
There's like a public parking space and they're like, oh, we're just gonna have everyone park in public parking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's my actual parking up there.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's town owned and it's published.
Their off-site parking agreements, really existing parking facilities, that's not just like. I think that's pretty clear.
Yeah, I mean, those are definition of state long everything for it, but, so I will be. Or like, I guess at some point I'll be drafting, uh, changes to the Luso in particular. Um, and stuff, and yeah, probably drafting the Luso and then.
Subdivision?
Subdivisional sites of the Luso.
I still think it's nuts, but I'm enough in charge.
It'll be interesting. It was gonna be worse until I had, where it was gonna be like if you're near a public transit facility, the same quarter mile will apply, but then. People are like, what about ferries? Ferry facility, doesn't mean you can actually go anywhere, it's just you can go from ferry to another. But, yeah, so. That'll be interesting to see how it applies in the real world here again.
Right, I mean, cause you're not always banned on-street parking or limit on-street parking, and then, then what are you gonna do?
Well, again, if I'm a developer. Unless it makes sense, I'm probably not gonna opt for an agreement, um. Anyhow, the town, the boards. It's interesting, cause it's gonna be a legal question, I don't know how it plays out yet, but if the board determines there's a safety like issue with this particular like quarter mile. Situation where you're like. There's no way you can walk along this road safely, like there's no sidewalks or something like that. Um, does the board actually have the power then to be like, this, you, we technically allow these agreements, but this agreement is just not safe? Does the board then have the power to make them put parking on their lot instead of doing the agreement? That's a legal question, I don't know, again, in the real world, how this law will play out.
Or maybe you say the developer needs to build a sidewalk.
You were that, yeah, it's gonna be the compromise, if you wanna like parking, you gotta build the.
Like give us a good, nice sidewalk.
The next shorter one, LE nine nine seven, um, which just says you have to allow. Um, residential units within commercial zones, I'm pretty sure the only commercial zone in mountain doesn't allow. Residential units is the, um, shoreline commercial zone.
We do allow that.
You do allow, yeah, you just. You have to go by the adjacent residential zoning district.
Right.
So then, I don't think there is a commercial zone. There's a really long one, LE eighteen twenty-nine was. This bill, um. Me or familiar with LE thousand and three, and built on that, and certain requirements within that law. Um, so. LE thousand and three originally had like a, um, a minimum of two dwelling units throughout municipality has to be allowed on. This upsets to three. Have to be allowed anywhere in a municipality, but if you're within the growth area and connected to water and sewer, you have to allow four units on a lot. It's the ADU part, just because the ones below it kinda tie into that, so.
Almost plus the ADU, or is that considered?
Four units total, so even if you have, if ADUs would count.
Okay.
That totals. But so, in a growth area, connecting to water and sewer. You have to have a, you can't allow a minimum lot size greater than five thousand square feet, could go lower, suppose, but. Um, five thousand square feet has to be the maximum minimum lot size you can have, require. And then in addition to that, the density for dwelling units, so the first four units has to be twelve or one thousand two hundred fifty square feet per unit. Which is five thousand by by four, so essentially you can fit four units on any lot that's five thousand square feet.
That has public sewer and water in the growth area.
That right, if it's connected to public water sewer and in a growth area. By the top line, and so. But after the first four units, you can then require an additional five thousand square feet wherever you're going after that. Um, and then if you're in a growth area but not connected to water and sewer, if it follows the state. Uh, or state minimum of twenty thousand square feet per septic. And the density has to be, uh, twenty thousand square feet. Which is the end state minimum, and then. Uh, if you are outside of a growth area but connected to water and sewer. You have to, again, the five thousand square foot. Rule still applies, but the density is five thousand square feet per unit for the first two units. Before you expand, you can increase it after that. Yeah, and so that'll go up to the ADU again, which was just, you have to allow one ADU per single family lot. Uh, in all zones, and then. There can't be an owner occupancy requirement for dimensional stand, additional dimensional standard.
And we're gonna have an AD, do we currently have an ADU definition?
Uh, yes.
I should know that, but I don't.
So this here, the town has a cap on the size. For an ADU.
Self-contained dwelling unit, more, I mean, is, oh, is, is that considered being more strict?
I don't think so, because the dimension standard usually just supplies setbacks and.
Yeah.
Plan usage and stuff like that, so you can't require those, but you can.
We can apply those.
So. When I, traditionally, when I think of accessory residential dwelling units, they tend to be smaller than the dwelling unit itself. But that isn't part of our requirement.
Yes, it are, and it's required.
A self-contained dwelling unit located within, attached to or detached from a residential dwelling, one family located on the same.
But there can't be more than seventy-five percent of the principal building.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, living area.
And that's still allowed under state.
Yeah, and that's still allowed.
This was intentional, it's not actual size of the room.
The only size restriction.
Otherwise, why bother, why not just say this, the number of dwellings you can have on.
Well, cause then. The reason that, the only reason I really have one in Ellsworth was because then people would say like, oh, it's an ADU, not just a lot primary. Housing unit, which again, like.
I mean, they're very popular in congested urban, you know, in Los Angeles and Portland, Oregon and.
Well, they're popular.
Yeah, yeah.
Apparently they help solve housing, I don't know if that's actually true.
It's just another one, so.
Yeah. Round here.
Right. And that, so it does nothing to help with.
Well.
Affordability.
Well.
Our housing, right. And that's the person who's renting it to supplement their income.
Yeah, like you can't have an occupancy requirement, but in Ellsworth, we created a. Short term mental regulation, then nothing to do with ownership. Uh, it's just, you could only, couldn't. Rent it for less than to per, yeah, for less than thirty days, for twenty-eight days, cause February is. And so you could still put a restriction on ADUs like that, you just can't say it's. Like occupancy related restriction. Then, again, they just. End this law again, so the shift didn't allow two and a half. Uh, time is based density for four housing projects, but it's already been. There's that fourteen foot. I allow that minimum, and like I think fourteen feet would be the right place to stop for this area, um. And, you know, an interesting thing that's come up through this is like. Two towns have fire trucks, these ladders will go out, you know, from the house, like, by fires. But I'm. Pretty sure he'd be okay with the equipment, I can always add.
Not really high, I've seen a mountain fire.
I, I think that, and it may be in terms of ADUs and their use. There may be an argument that somebody who resides in a property. And they have an ADU. And it supplements their income or something like that, that may be a different argument than. Then. I've got a short-term rental and then I'm gonna build an ADU and they're.
We don't regulate them, so we wouldn't know.
Right.
Also, again, you can't. Can't regulate an ADU or brand ADU just because whoever owns it doesn't live on the lot.
Right.
Just can. But not the level of, you can say that it just can't be rented for a certain amount of time. That state has not written that.
Right. Okay.
Um, so planning review, um, this kind of shrinks, uh, your guys' view and this does put more work, okay?
Okay.
Where self a project, a subdivision, like a structural subdivision could have had three or more units. Now it's uh, a structural subdivision has to have five or more units, as long as they're all in the same structure. So I mean, if someone did three duplexes, that would still come to the, the same lot, that would still come to the planning board, because it's three different structures.
Well, within a structure.
It was two duplexes, it was. It would be four splits, four units, but they're all outside of, it's multiple structures, or if it was a four quadplex like apartment building. Uh, that would go to Kim for administrative review.
Right, if you had five condos in one building. It would come to us, the thing, it seems to me, it's within a structure.
Yes. So land still comes to you for three or more splits.
Or you get. Three duplexes, they come to us because they're three structures.
Yeah. So really, if you have just a quadplex or four unit apartment buildings, or three, five complexes too.
Why are they, why are they changing that, do you know?
To make review for like.
For like. So they're not doing the process.
It was just kind of like a, yeah, just to avoid the planning board process for smaller. And then.
It's too bad they just.
Planning board training.
Like the night compartments, I don't know if I have others, I'm planning one. But if we know if I.
Another reason for site to interview.
We have, we're at seven fifty-three, so.
All right, just going through, let's finish this.
Uh, yeah. This one, I guess it's the same as well, pretty much, for the non-yes, uh, eighty is all nine and four in lots.
That's allowed now.
Density is allowed to.
I think it's an hour dance. We have that as that. When we invite. Yeah, yeah, pretty good.
If there was a sprinkler requirement for ADUs, um, you can't, well, um. Quest sprinklers only to use that are attached to one or two family. So that is like a single family home with an attached ADU, you can't require sprinklers. And if there's a. Uh, duplex and you add ADUs to that duplex, uh, you can't require sprinklers.
How does that come into play with the state fire marshals office when multi-family requires for?
So that's a lot, right, it'd be different, this is.
Ours is three more right now, multi-family.
Right. So. Uh, if it's an ADU, it gets away without.
Really?
Sprinklers, and then. My understanding is.
Ridiculous, having that whole separate category.
Yeah, and so the real purpose of this was because there are towns that were using sprinkler systems as a way to prevent ADUs. And again, like it was just kind of a war back and forth, with the state being like, you know, stop that, and this was the easiest way they saw the thing, stop that.
Well, they're not replying now, one and two family dwelling sprinklers.
Well, unless you're municipality adopting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, unless it's adopting it.
Apparently.
Yeah, but the state, as far as state fire marshals, they haven't adopted that, and neither have they now, I mean, I know they've been trying for years to try to get it, but.
But, yeah, no, again, the farmer sprinklers make sense, but, um. I guess not, not then.
I mean, that's just weird, because this makes now like a third dwelling.
Or four, yeah.
Or four, yes, multi, anyways, go ahead.
So subdivision change, talked about that, five or more units in five, uh, years instead of three years. And then. Or no, sorry. But I think. There was one version of the bill that had three years timeline, I can't.
Oh, really?
Yeah, right, I would change that, I think, I think they got, I think it is five minutes and five years now.
Yeah.
I think in that session, they'll probably change the definition of subdivision entirely, um. And then after that, it's planning board members now have to be trained within a hundred days of their appointment. What that training is, what it means, there's no, they're gonna answer that, so.
So what, what's, what is the status of these?
These are law.
Done by they, yeah, but. Where are they in as far as? Being adopted or regulated or?
So towns, uh, concerned for all of these have until July twenty-sixth, for town meeting.
So these have already been approved?
Yeah, these are signed by the.
So by July twenty-sixth?
So these are earnest changes, we have to do for next time.
Yeah, well, we have some, but we can, yeah, okay, okay, so we gotta work on that, this.
So then I guess the next question is, is that gonna be something the Luso does? Because we're gonna have to have, we're gonna have to have a discussion about the. The work of Luso versus this, and I mean, um, yeah, the Landes advisor committee. This is this.
Obviously.
I mean, I frankly really appreciate that we've been able to do this with us this summer, speaking of that, before, do we have an agenda for next meeting? Are there any applications for next meeting?
Planning board.
Then, bro.
Yep, you have a completeness review. Or subdivision.
Okay.
So far, deadline is tomorrow.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Anything else under other? Yes. If we, if not. Uh, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll be happy to second that one. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.